Regular council meeting is called to order at 6:01 PM. Before we move to additions and deletions, I would like us to please take a moment of silence for the passing of the city's friend, a teacher, and Dan Ross, who passed today, in condolences to his family. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, additions and deletions. I just would like to point out that on number four, there was just a typo. The name is M A L A N D. Please delete the S. Additions and deletions. President Fashan?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Shabana?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Fitchase?
Thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which has the regular minutes of January 6, 2025, the special meeting minutes of January 13, 2025, special meeting minutes of January 17, 2025, AP warrants for January 14, 2025, and January 17, 2025. Pardon me. Arrow warrants for January 7, 2025, and January 23, 2025. Liquor licenses, vendor permits, and special events. May I have a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved.
The motion do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is Council Call. Or Agent Mallon? Call out. Please. Thank you. I would like to read this proclamation from Newport City Vermont's proclamation for Agent Mallon. Whereas David Mallon was a man of service, his life was devoted to protecting our country and keeping the people of America safe. He was an Air Force veteran and was assigned to the swanton sector as a K-9 handler. Prior to the Vermont assignment, he worked along the southern border in Texas, providing security detail of the Pentagon during the September 11 attacks. Whereas words spoken about the agent are nothing shy of stating what a remarkable person he was and that the people within the community he loved were his family. His focus was on serving with honor. His bravery is insurmountable. It was clear from his service that he had only respect and pride for his work, that he chose and clearly put his service over himself. Whereas the death of U.S. Border Patrol agent is tragic. He was shot in the line of duty in Vermont. All are heartbroken by the loss of this dedicated Border Patrol agent. The city of Newport expresses the debt of gratitude owed to Agent Mallon. He provided nearly a decade of service protecting communities. Whereas the city of Newport expresses its sincere condolences to the agent's family and friends and to those he served with. Whereas we must always remember that the men and women in green on the front lines of the border are there to defend our homeland at a great personal cost. The cost of their courage serving as public servants like this agent can become paying the ultimate price. So please join me in a moment of silence to honor Agent Mallon's life. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. King, for rising for that. I greatly appreciate that. All those in favor, please, of passing this Newport City proclamation, please say aye.
May I have a motion?
Oh, sorry. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And thank you for that. All those in favor of passing the proclamation for the agent, please say aye.
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 Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. I will get where to have that delivered. I will get where to have that delivered. But in case, remember if your family wishes to pick it up, I'm going to leave a copy with you as well. Thank you. You can have half that original. If you hold it, I'll get it for me tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. So it doesn't go to... Or else Travis could hold it, if you prefer, whichever.
You want to.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number five. But before we get to number five, I would like to do another presentation. We had the proclamation. We honored Mr. Ross. But right now, I would like to honor the president of our council. A little bit of good news. Not that you're leaving, but you got a plaque. Okay? So I want to thank you so much. It is a pleasure to work with you. And you have been amazing. And this is from all of us and from the citizens. And carry on. Okay. Now, the next item on the agenda is the memorandum of understanding with a kaboda for videography and photography with a potential vote. I would like to recognize Mr. Forrest. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you for this.
David Forrest, you know me. Board member of NDD. So last fall, Josh Provo, which is one of the owners of Champlain Valley Equipment, notified me that Kabota was interested in coming to the community to do some film-taking for some commercials that they're going to use across the nation this year. So obviously, we were very excited about the opportunity. Kabota would want to film in our small, little community. Kabota came in the area three weeks ago and identified the following sites that they'd like to film. One of them is the UCA parking lot. I've reached out to UCA, and they're okay with allowing Kabota to film in their parking lot. I've also reached out to Reg Abbott, who owns Family Dollar, so that way the UCA faculty and students can park in his parking lot at Family Dollar while they film shots in their parking lot. The other area is the state parking lot above the Gateway Center, right behind the building here. Mayor Sullivan has reached out to BGS, the state of Vermont, to see if they would have any interest, because that's state property. So we would need their permission. So we've reached out. Not sure if they will allow that or not. And I don't know if you've heard yet or not.
I haven't heard back from them, but I do know that they have received it.
Yeah. So that's a possibility. The other area is the parking area and waterfront area down near the Gateway Building. So the entire waterfront area down below here. They'd like to use that area. The next area is the Proudie Beach area. And then also, some sidewalk footage in the Newport area. Locations could be determined. They'd like to do some shots with the tractors plowing some sidewalks and the community. So I do believe they'll also be filming at North Country High School. I think they're doing some arrangements over there as well. Kabota has sent an MOU for the city to sign. It lists all the insurance coverage that they carry. They have also assured us that if any costs are incurred by the city, they would reimburse, although that's very unlikely that that would happen. The mayor shared the MOU with the city attorney to ensure the language is proper and to my understanding, everything's okay. Kabota has also agreed to allow NDD to post on our social media channels ahead of time so we can inform the public that the filming will be occurring in the community. We did not want to surprise anybody in the community. They see orange tractors everywhere and cameras everywhere. The filming will be taking place next week, providing we don't get rain, which doesn't look like we are in the forecast. They did ask the city, which we've discussed, that they limit plowing in the Proudie Beach area so they have as much snow as they can to plow around. This is an exciting opportunity for the city. We're really grateful that they thought this would be a good place to photo shoot. And I'll make sure to get copies of the commercials once it's done so we can share on NDD's social media so everybody can see beautiful shots of City Newport.
So if you don't mind, I'd like to just add that we had a department head meeting, and there were no issues after everything was discussed and that one concern that I raised and it was decided that it would not happen was that the city does not look like it's endorsing a new product. Okay? So this is where part would be part of the film, the location and that, and what all about Newport, but it would not be an endorsement of a product.
Correct. Yeah, correct.
So on that, I'm going to ask for the motion, and then we'll start the discussion, if you don't mind. So may I have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding as presented here with any tweaks if the state comes in regarding that particular location?
So moved.
And the motion do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Okay. Any discussion? Questions? Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. And I will take care of this. Okay?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Can I give you this one? Just... Next item on the agenda is the 2025 miles certificate. Signing. Mr. Bernie?
You have the copy here, Jim. Okay. There are no changes for this year. So it's the form we sign every year for highway violence for Class 1, 2, and 3 highway law.
Okay. So I am going to pass out the one that you gave me with no changes so that everybody sees that there's no changes. And I have a motion for the mayor to sign the certificate of highway mileage here ending February 10, 2025, as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Make sure I sign it in the right place so Mr. Bernie, it doesn't say to me in the morning, you don't know where to sign. Any one of those.
Because we're all signing it.
Okay. This goes to this. Right? You need...
I'll get it.
You'll get it from Jim. Okay, thank you for that. Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the annual meeting warning with a potential... Okay. I'm going to recognize the treasurer to just explain the warning and also the fact that at this point in time, it may include something that's on the agenda a little further down the line.
So the warning is the usual annual warning for the city. It lays out what we're voting on. The only positions or city officials are being voted on tells when the annual meeting is, when the polls are open, from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And there's articles for appropriations. I think there's 16 of them. And this needs a council approval. All this needs is a couple money figures to insert. You can still sign the back page. I'll just insert them in.
Okay. So...
Is there any question?
Yeah. Well, I just want to fill the motion out there, and we can have the questions. So may I have a motion for the council to sign the City of Newport warning as presented by the treasurer with addition of specific numbers that may... that need to be added?
So moved.
Have a motion do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any comments? May I see a copy? Yes. I'll give it back, I promise. Sure.
Do you have a list of who's running? Or here who's running?
This is the warning.
You can have that.
When I bring it here, I'm going to get the names. But thank you for that. I'm sorry. No, take your time. There are numbers. There are numbers. Yeah, because we didn't get to the final. But, you know, we have on this agenda some... Sorry, I'm saying, are you approving this? And then those numbers are automatically going to be put in? Once, if those numbers are approved, whatever numbers are approved this evening will be put in. So there'll be a separate vote on that? Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah. So that was the caveat in the motion. So on the request here now, the treasurer can tell us who has put in their ballots.
I can't. I think I can, that memory.
Okay.
For mayor, Rick has turned his petition in. He's the only one. The council is Clark, Curtis, Carter Finnegan, Carl King, Andrew Touche, and Adam Ortiz. It's five for council.
Thank you.
And me. Sorry.
Well, thank you, everybody, for stepping up. It's hard work, and I appreciate the fact that everybody stepped up to run. Council members, any further questions on this?
I'll get you the video link. Probably by tomorrow morning. Is that too late or do you want it tonight?
No, that's fine. I can change anything except for the last page.
Okay. So what the president of the council's speaking about is there's a video link that needs to go on this, and he's going to reserve one so that it will be kept. So have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Can you just write on the left?
Sorry.
You're going to need... I know you gave your copy to Ed.
No, I got it back. Kevin did his copy.
Do you want my copy? Kevin, it's an extra.
Okay.
All good?
Good.
Next item on the agenda is the White and Burke contract with a potential vote. Thank you, Mr. Bernie, for making these copies. If anybody would like to see a copy of this contract, they're up here right now. And the reason there weren't copies is because we just... It came through late from the attorney. Somebody come and get a copy. We just made it. And I'm going to recognize Mr. Forrest again. Thank you.
Hello again. All right. So I'm going to kind of go through high level real quick, what you have in that contract. So I'll go over the key points. So there's two phases as part of the proposal. So Phase 1 will include: Determine feasibility of a tax incremental financing district based on the recently approved master plan. Determine the TIF district boundaries. Preparing preliminary financial viability assessments that are tied to the master plan. Identify any gaps with the existing information that the city has put together over the course of many years, such as cost estimates for public improvements, other possible financial resources, recommendations to the city for other consultants to assist with providing the information. As an example, I think we've talked about this before, the need for engineers to evaluate the main sewer system underneath Main Street, as an example. From this work, White Burke will put together a package that details the physical boundaries, the cost for necessary infrastructure investments, and the potential incremental taxable values that could be realized from private properties. This will also include the potential tax revenue and hypothetical debt structures to understand debt service and cash flow. If the city council and White Burke are comfortable with those results, we will submit a letter of intent to the Vermont Economic Progress Council, and I'll start calling them VEPC going forward, and can proceed to the second phase of the contract. So that will be the first contract, or the first phase, I should say. Phase 2 will include the following things. Develop a master TIF plan and submit this plan to VEPC for approval. This plan will establish the district and will show how it complies with all the state criteria. Once specific projects are identified and secured, they will be submitted subsequently as phase filings. These will need to be approved by the city council and then reviewed by VEPC. These individual phase filings must align with the master TIF plan. Formal adoption of a master TIF plan includes informational meetings to inform the community of the city's intentions. Once complete, the city council needs to approve the TIF plan in a publicly warned meeting. If the city council approves the master TIF plan, the next step is to apply to VEPC for state approval. This is a collaborative initiative as it is imperative that the community fully understands the impacts of the district and to convey the viability and necessity to VEPC. Once submitted to VEPC, they will convene one or more hearings, including a district tour in our community. The intent is that this will result in approval by VEPC, and the TIF district will be established. I'll roll into the costs now. So the first phase of the White Burke contract that you have equates to $50,000. If we see that Phase 1 is successful, that will bring us to Phase 2, which is an additional $50,000. Other costs could add an additional $150,000 to $300,000 on top of the $100,000 proposal from White Burke. This is an estimate that was given to us by White Burke based on their experience of doing this type of work in other Vermont communities. As mentioned prior, these costs will ensure we have detailed information on the cost for the infrastructure investments. I'm sure a logical question is how the city will pay for the White Burke proposal and other associated costs, such as engineering costs, that will be required to proceed with a TIF application. NDD is actively pursuing grant proposals to help with those costs. However, our recommendation to the council this evening is to dedicate the remaining portion of the $395,000 Walmart fund for this purpose in order to assure that there is no scenario in which the cost of securing TIF approval from the state would have to be covered by Newport taxpayers. The Walmart funds were created exactly for this kind of purpose, to encourage the economic development of downtown Newport and to mitigate the potential negative impact of Walmart's location outside of our downtown area. And I'll go into timing. So starting this January upon your approval this evening through June of 2025, the next six months, prep work, which includes conversations with developers developing potential district maps. Start work with city leadership to get an understanding of all the infrastructure in the city. June through September of 2025, identify project lists, district maps, infrastructure costs, funding sources, and evaluate the TIF district criteria. September through January 2025, public educational sessions. January through March of 2026, present the TIF district plan to the city council and public. Intended VEPC application submission. Continue to meet with the council and the public. Start development of VEPC application materials. And then finally, city council approves and adopts a TIF district plan with a creation date of April 1, 2026. And then April 2026 through June 2026, submit the VEPC application. TIF district VEPC hearings. Final determination voted on VEPC and approval submitted to the city within the following month of their determination. I'm almost done.
Take your time. This is going to be... I'll cut out and I'll just cut.
Concurrently with all this work, from September of 2025 through September of 2026, work with White Burke and developers to identify first projects. Project or projects. Goal is to achieve an initial bond vote in September of 2026. Phase 1 filings will be prepared and ready to file the day we get district approval. Construction to begin on first project in the spring of 2027. So keep in mind, all the stars... So keep in mind, all the stars need to align for all of these dates that I just blurred out. They need to work. Having that said, we have a great team of leaders, not only with NDD, but in the city, working on this. We experienced great success with the master plan that we did last year, and I don't anticipate this being any different. The end.
Thank you. Don't spill there.
I'm not.
Okay, council, I'm not going to throw a motion. I just want to have, right now, general discussion. Any questions from the council?
How much do we have left in the Walmart funds?
I think it's 395,000. 395,000?
I don't like the blank check of 150 to 300K of unknown cost, though.
And I would say you need to think 300K is the number.
Would it work if we voted for the 100 now, see what you get for grants, or it doesn't work?
It doesn't work like that. I mean, we would go back and we could renegotiate, but I would think that because you don't know which project's going to be approved, what's going to happen after the first assessment to see if even a project is viable, and so on, and so on, and so on. So I would think that what you need to understand is this is the number, the higher number, which is why the request is going to use the Walmart funds, which has that higher number there. If anything happens, it will be a plus, but I would not put money on the fact that it's going to be less than that. Because this is a huge project, and these types of projects require money, require hiring consultants, et cetera.
So what happens if this grant money will take you?
Well, you could, that would be used, but I'm just saying, right now, you want to at least say there is 395 to cover the higher end of, you don't want, and then other grants come in, you can apply.
And use that money instead of all of the Walmart money?
If there's appropriate money, and it doesn't harm anything yet. But I don't want you to think it's going to be the low end, because that is just not realistic.
It never is, no.
But those are good questions, and those are important questions.
Are there any stipulations in fashion how the city uses the Walmart funds, and does this fit?
This actually, I looked at that agreement again and over again. It does fit.
That's all I have. Can I just add one more?
Sure, I could add a lot of pieces.
So Clark, one other thing, just to be aware of, is that any additional contracts for engineering or architectural design or environmental review, or whatever they might be, would obviously be brought back to the council for its consideration.
So an addition, like?
As a part of that extra 150 to 300, that's what that money is projected to be covered.
So you have the opportunity to understand what's happening during these different phases, but realistically, the 150 is not going to happen. Okay. All right, I'm not going to do a motion, but I am going to come on out. So, okay, Dave, don't disappear. You're too far. That's seen. Okay, who wants to go first? Michelle, somebody go.
Okay. First of all, just on the money aspect, when we say 395 is left in the Walmart fund, I'm also anticipating in the next two years, or three years, before this starts up, NDD takes $30,000 a year that the city, doesn't take, asks for, $30,000 a year, and has consistently gotten it. And if that's going to be happening, then you don't have $395,000 available for this, because 90,000 or so of it, and if you expect to continue doing that, that's where the Walmart money has been going up until now. So you're not going to have 395, number one, I would think.
Provided that, we, then we'll adjust the $30,000 in a minute.
Okay. And two, when you say that there will be no tax cost to the city residents, we have previously discussed that beyond paying for White and Burke's contract, when the first project begins, someone has to pay upfront for, let's say, water and sewage pipes or whatever is needed on Main Street, or whatever the project takes. It takes a year or two of the project to be completed before a tax benefit is received from the increment in the value of the property. And in order, in order for the road, or whatever the construction is, or the parking lot to be dug and prepared, somebody's got to put out that money first, which usually will be the tax paid.
So can I jump in a little bit, because this is complex, and then feel free to jump in. We'll deal with the $30,000 question after we deal with the TIF. This is not the approval of a TIF. Please remember that. This is just the phase for the analysis to see if there's a viable project that would meet a TIF that would be viable. And then after that, those would come forward. And yes, once you have a TIF, it's a different animal, but that would have to be voted on first, and that may not even make it past the tax pay.
Agreed. I'm only saying.
But I just wanted to be clear that this, right now.
Got, I got that.
Okay, but I want everybody to understand that.
To say it would be tax-free for all of it, it's not.
No, it's not for all of it. It's not for all of it. It's just for this phase, to see if, in fact, there is a viable project that meets the criteria for TIF. If there is, that's entirely different, come back to the council, go to the public, animal, and do the presentation of the project. So you're absolutely right. So I think what Mr. LaForce, and correct me if I'm wrong, was saying is, we're not talking about the TIF right now. We're talking about, do we even have a project that would meet that criteria? So I'm gonna let you jump in and change anything, or if I miss.
Nope, you're absolutely spot on.
So now I'd like to go to the $30,000, and I'm going to look to.
I can speak to it. So you're absolutely right, and some of the Walmart funding has been dedicated to support for NDD over the last number of years. And I don't know exactly how many. It predated me. When I came on three and a half years ago to work for NDD, at that time, NDD's budget was just over $60,000. It was almost $70,000. And $60,000 of it was coming either, it was coming from two sources, $30,000 from the city operating budget and $30,000 from the Walmart funds. That lasted, I believe, two years, the first two years that I was in the work with NDD. And then, two years ago, about now, actually, the city made a determination that they would no longer be dedicating the Walmart funds and only be doing the operational funds. So we have, over the last two years, we, Newport Downtown Development, has received $30,000 each year, as opposed to the old $60,000 number. And that's the only support that we're receiving at this point. So the intention is that from here forward, that $30,000 will come from the city operating budget to support the variety of economic revitalization and development projects and events and things going on in downtown Newport. And there's no intention on the part of NDD at this point to ask for, nor do I expect one. I'll just be clear that we do not expect to come back to ask the city for any more of the Walmart money to support overhead or administration of NDD. And the way, just to be entirely transparent, the way that we've covered that, because we've also quadrupled our budget in the last two and a half years. So our budget is now pushing $250,000 a year, and 30 of that comes from the city. And the rest of it is coming from a variety of grants and lead sponsorships from businesses in the community, et cetera, a gift from the Palmer Law Foundation.
Thank you.
I have a slightly different, and what I want to address is the elephant in the room. From where I'm standing, it appears to me that there is a massive conflict. Sorry, talking to the wrong person. There is a massive conflict in a city council member, who is the only person running for mayor, who is in a position of leadership with the organization that's going to benefit from this money, and is also in a position to have undue influence on the council. As the description was going, you were sitting there, he was sitting there, nodding along. That, whether you intend it or not, is communication. That's a real issue. One of the other people who is running is employed by NVDA. It doesn't even matter who it is at this point. But if that person is elected, there would be a person from NDD sitting in that chair, a person from NVDA sitting on the council. How is that not a significant conflict of interest? And how would something like that be addressed? Because it's really important when we're talking about a lot of money here, and a lot of influence.
So conflicts of interest, of course, are covered by the policy that the city has. Needs to be looked at thoroughly by the person who believes they own that conflict. And those rules need to be digested ethically and transparently. And the council needs to also understand that now there's an ethics commission that's out there that has also identified conflicts of interest, and there are rules there. So as that happens and comes forward, it is very important that the council continue to look at that. Appropriate statements are made, and votes happen, and council members are transparent and speak up. It is very important also to understand that the conflict of interest is owned by the person who believes there is the conflict. But, no, but I want to go a little further. So, for example, if you turned around and said, Ms. The Mayor has a conflict of interest, it would be my ethical obligation to turn around and say, do I own it? Do I have it? And address it. And I would hope that even if I didn't believe it was there, that I would do a thorough vetting, that I would got, not from the city attorneys, because the city attorneys represent the city, but that I will go to my own personal attorneys, and I would really look at this, which I would, in a very hard way. And I would be open to the questions and addressing them as appropriately as may be. And it's very possible that there may be conflicts of interest, at which point in time it would change the dynamic of the vote at this council to the point of maybe there's not enough votes to happen, which is another issue. So all of those things do need to be looked at, and it's really important. Now, when you go out and vote, you vote, right? I mean, the people who are at the ballot box, you know, are accountable. That's why you vote. So, but I think as far as the process, we have a policy, we have an ethics commission, and everybody is now gone for the training, the majority of people have gone for the training. It's mandatory that the rest of the people go for the training. It's eye-opening. Okay, so, point well taken. Did I get it?
Could I just speak briefly?
You may. Just don't personalize it.
So, well.
Well, right now, because I think the question was, there may be two people elected. We have somebody on the council now who's going to.
Yes, I understand.
But I don't want you to speak for the future. Now, okay, so right now, you could talk about that.
Yes, what I can speak, actually, too, I really appreciate the question, Pam, because, you know, I think we need to have an open conversation about it. And it's one that I'm happy to have. And it's not one that we're, that I'm surprised by. We had it a year ago. And I've been responding to potential conflicts of interest throughout the year as a member of council. And my practice as a council member has been that if there is a vote that has specifically to do with the relationship between the city and Newport Downtown Development, for instance, the MOU that was passed in December, in those instances, even if there is not a financial piece to it, which there wasn't, still, I step back and recuse myself from that vote. If there is any kind of a financial interest for myself or my family, and I would extend it to the members of the Newport Downtown Development Board, for sure. In that instance, it would be appropriate to recuse myself as a council member, and I would certainly do that. If it's, if there is not a financial interest, and I would suggest that if there's been a longstanding practice of a city contribution to the work of NDD, and no increase has been asked for, then that does not represent a difference. It does not represent a material difference. So in the case of voting on the budget last week, I chose not to recuse myself, because I did not believe it to be a material interest. And further, at this point, the NDD board has been clear that they have no intention of using money from the city to support staff salaries. There are, with a $250,000 a year budget, there are plenty of other things that need the support, and we are raising more than enough money through foundation and lead sponsorships to manage staff salaries. So for those reasons, I chose not to recuse myself. Had we been asking a week ago for, you know, not 30.
I just want to bring it back to what we're talking about here.
So I think I am, because I'm speaking.
Well, I think you're going to something that was done historically. I want you to stay within.
So, okay, so for the purposes of this, actually, I'll just finish with that. I would intend to vote on the White and Burke contract this evening. It has no material, there's no material compensation or financial benefit to NDD. In fact, the opposite is true. NDD is giving considerable amount of administrative time at no charge to the city in order to do that work, to manage the process on behalf of the city with White and Burke. So I intend to vote on this contract this evening.
Except that one of the, and this has nothing to do with the conflict of interest. I just want to make it clear, Brian Gray was included in the MOU getting money.
Yes, but not from the city.
No, but it just, it's an MOU with the city. I didn't want it to look like there was no connection. Yeah, because he will be part of the management.
Yes. Happy to talk about it for you.
Yes, well, I'm sorry, just, yeah, okay, you finish. Go.
Let somebody else go first.
No, I want you to go.
I'm just curious, because Dave LaForce presented this contract, but it is a contract between White and Burke and the city of Newport. And so usually in contracts, you know, there's negotiation, like, so the city might say, well, Dave, David White, 340 per hour, that's a little bit stiff. You know, could you come down to something more reasonable? But I don't hear that in this contract, the city has actively negotiated.
So I will tell you right now, this is the city, who, our attorneys talking with me, who did the contract with White and Burke. Okay, they presented it at the very beginning when we were discussing it. The president of the council was there. White and Burke came on. Everybody who was going to be, Dave was part of that. But when it came down to the actual discussion about what was going to be the end result of this particular contract, it was our city attorneys. It was not NDD, okay? And it was, yeah, and regarding hourly rates, et cetera, the hourly rates were consistent based upon the other contracts that they have done, and it is actually not such a high rate for an attorney. Well, I don't, no, I didn't, but I'm saying it's not an over-the-top rate. Okay, remember, our city attorneys have given us a lower rate for certain, for us both, both of our law. for us both, both of our law firms have come down substantially on the rates they charge us when they do municipal. The city, this is entirely different now. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gray.
So I just want to revisit something that Councilmember Curtis brought up, just so I can verify, that the request is for the Walmart funds to be used so as not to have the taxpayers incur extra fee, and that it's possible that grant funds would be able to be used instead of the Walmart funds, which would also keep the taxpayers from incurring extra.
Only for this phase?
That's what I'm talking about, this phase right here.
Right. This is just the identification of, is there a feasible project? If so, what's needed, working with the department heads in the city, figuring out what needs to happen, and the legal fees here. At the end of the day, the results of Phase 1 may be, no, that doesn't work. Or we found 5. Okay, so we don't know. And then there will be coming forward the next phase. And that's a point in time where everything goes out to vote, okay? Because if a TIF is identified and is going to happen, that belongs to the people.
Okay.
Okay, so no tax to the citizens, just during this identification phase, okay? Okay, very important thought of that, that sound, yes?
There's a hand up online as well.
Can you tell me who it is?
Ms. Bierling.
Ms. Bierling?
I just had a question. Madam Mayor, you were describing about what the process is in reference to the conflicts of interest, and that you were saying that it really is on the person themselves that, who perceives that they have a conflict of interest. But my question is this. If there is what appear to be a conflict of interest to members of the public that an individual is not willing to own, what is the recourse in that situation? What is the accountability in that situation? What's the process? What would a resident do if they believe that there is a conflict that's not being recognized by the individual council member?
Okay, so I am going to respond to that the best I can, Ms. Bierling. Of course, though, I'm sure that there will be a lot more legal research done if something like that happens on a project of this magnitude. But the people should definitely be allowed to speak and comment when the identification by the person who has the perceived conflict comes up. And if the council does so, make statements to agree or disagree with that council member or council members. And if there's any issue regarding a non-vote or a tie vote, then I would hope that at that point in time, the public has that opportunity to vote. If you know, I'll always try to do a motion so we can throw it out to the people, so that they can speak. My hope is that that continues, so the people do not lose that opportunity to speak on those issues. So my hope is that the people definitely have an opportunity to speak, and the council members take this very seriously. I can't give you the true legal process, because I haven't discussed it, but I will definitely look into it further.
But I mean, I'm even addressing something where a council person doesn't even raise the conflict. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
Where they're so unwilling to own it, that they're not even identifying it as a conflict, and yet the rest of the public might be standing back saying, oh, my lord, this is a huge conflict. And, you know, as residents, I think that we need to have some sort of recourse available. It would seem to me perhaps filing something with the Ethics Commission, would that be available to residents?
So that is always available, but I do want you to know, and the people to know, that the Ethics Commission does not do enforcement, but, and that the Ethics Commission usually just identifies the issue if it's brought by the person who has the conflict. However, it doesn't stop the query. I would highly recommend that that particular issue, like, let's say I, as a taxpayer, I have an issue, I would want to write to the council, I would want to alert the council of my position, I would want to identify perhaps by groups of petitions with the public, so that it can come to the council, and that a process could be addressed. Because as, as it goes deeper and deeper into bigger projects, bigger magnitude, the people, of course, do have that opportunity, and there has to be a method. I would hope that it's looked further into the policy that we have in place right now, and that could be expanded if the council still desires going forward, and the people could bring that to the attention as well. But I don't think it's just, well, I, it's not like it used to be because of the Ethics Commission, where it's just, well, I own the conflict and I don't think I have it, so therefore it's gone. The Ethics Commission is there, and they do take queries. So anybody could write a query, and that could be copied to the council members and the mayor, and then that would probably be addressed publicly. But I will definitely look further into this question, because it is an important question, and it is an in question, a question that's vital to the citizens because of the change with the Ethics Commission. Does that help at all? At least knowing we're going to look into it?
Yes, no, I mean, I'm a concrete person.
I know, but I don't have the...
I understand, and I'm hearing a lot of ifs and maybes, and it could be, and then conditional tenses of verbs, and so I'm not feeling real secure about it, because I do think that there are a certain number of people out there that perceive conflicts of interest, and I would like to know what our, you know, what our arsenal of accountability is, because we may need to use it. And so anyway, I think we'll get to that at greater length, and maybe publish something in your word file there.
So I am definitely going to look into that. As far as accountability goes, of course, there's always accountability at the ballot box, right? So the vote is, of course, important for people. The second is, the process does at least exist for the public comment and for addressing the council and the mayor. And I will look into it, because I do not have the legal research in front of me, and I do need to look at that. So I will do, I'm actually looking at the screen in case you can't see that, because I know you're here by Zoom. But I will look further into that, and it will be addressed as soon as I get something concrete. Because right now, I'm just telling you what I am aware of as far as my own communications with the Ethics Commission. Anyone else? Everybody's done? Okay, so on that note, is there a motion coming forward on this?
I'll make the motion. That'll be a contract for White and Burke to explore a TIP feasibility study.
And reserve the Walmart funds?
And reserve the remaining Walmart funds to offset the past.
And a motion, do I have a second?
Sure.
A motion in a second. Any further comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Or say nay. I's have it, and the motion is carried. Thank you, council member. And I am actually going to sign this right now. We'll have to scan that to our city attorneys as well. Okay, thank you. Mr. Force, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Gardner Park Playground, Playground Project, the water feature with a potential vote. I'm going to recognize the Director of Recreation, Michael Brown, to please walk us through what you've identified in your memo about the splash pad, et cetera, and what we need to understand about the necessity of the water feature.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So in your packet is a, is a memo with a brief synopsis outlining the project and the difficulties of having a traditional splash pad in a floodplain. But we've researched some alternatives. The original plan, as you all recall, was a traditional concrete engineered splash pad. So when I, when I arrived several years ago, I researched that and several other options. And what I discovered was that the traditional splash pad with the recycled water system would be extremely difficult considering the pad and pump would lie below grade. We were told from the manufacturer that the current design would not be advisable for floodplain and would require significant reedaring. So the cost of that traditional splash pad at the time, which was about two and a half years ago, they split close to $500,000. So the other alternative was a flow-through system with the same concrete pad, so it didn't require the pump or the filter below grade. Unfortunately, that still posed the same issues with the floodplain and the unit being potentially damaged when flow foot came through. The flow rates for a unit that size was about 63 gallons a minute. And when I did my calculations for the season, it turned out to be about 2.5 million gallons of water consumed throughout the season. So I had, I did some research on alternatives, because I didn't like that number very much. There's a company that I found called InstaSplash. They have two types of pads, and this is essentially a plug-and-play product that lies above grade. It can be easily installed and dismantled in about an hour, they say. They have two options. One is a recycled system, which is a pump-filter UV light that recycles the water. The estimated cost of that is $115,000. The pros, I outlined the pros and cons through doing research on the manuals and talking to the manufacturers. The pros of that recycled system, it's easily installed, the pump housing and pad are all above grade. It's cheaper than the original traditional plant, and it doesn't use city water. The cons with the recycled system, it would require pH testing several times a day and would require staffing on it for seven days a week, or while it's open. Potential health risks if the water is not monitored properly. The CDC did come out with a report in December outlining potential health risks for splash pads. But if you follow manufacturer guidelines and follow all the guidelines, you'll be fine. But the potential is there. Then the annual expense incurred with chemicals, and we would need staff to be certified, full-certified operators to handle the chemicals and the testing. The other product that InstaSplash has is a flow-through system, which means it uses city water, so we pump it right into city water. And the estimated cost for that is $60,000. The pros, same thing, it's easily, it's easy to install, it lies all above grade, it's up to city water. It will not need to be monitored by staff, it will not need to log pH levels. This system has an activation switch that automatically turns it on and off, so you can set a timer, and it pops out like on a spring, so it stops. The cons of this unit is that the water consumption for that 20 by 20 unit, the entry-level splash pad is 25 gallons per minute. So with certain assumptions, and I'll go through some. So 25 gallons per, for this 20 by 20 unit is a little over 500,000 gallons per season. The third alternative that I found, they're called misting poles, playground misting poles. And there's two companies that manufacture them that I found. It's CoolFog, and the other one is Landscape Structures, which is a playground manufacturer. They're both very similar. And this product is a water element, but it doesn't require a pad or drainage. It can be installed in the same location as the plate, where we want to put the pad where the plumbing is. And the water consumption for this unit is .24 gallons per minute with an on-off activation switch that automatically turns the water off, so it isn't continuously running. So the pros of this unit, it uses very little water comparatively. The, the total consumption throughout the season would be about 5,000 gallons. No staff required, no chlorination, no need to test the water levels, no drainage needed, so, you know, it's not going to drain down the culvert. No pad needed, has an automatic on-off switch. The cons for this is it's, it's not a traditional splash pad. It's different. So on that third page of the memo, you'll see my water consumption calculations. The assumption we used was a 12-week season. The traditional splash pad, which just continuously runs, you'll see the math, 12 weeks, eight hours a day, we just, these are the assumptions we used. 2.5 gallons, 2, 2,540,000 gallons. The InstaSplash, the 25 gallons per minute, we use the same assumptions, but this has the on-off switch. So we lowered it to four hours a day, so that way it's not in use all the time. And the water consumption was 504,000 gallons. Using those same assumptions for the misting poles, the gallon usage was 20,160 gallons. So those are the options that I found, and I just want to present that to the city council to make a decision.
So, go ahead, go ahead.
No, that's, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So thank you for that. Can you please take it a little bit further? And would you give us your recommendation on which you would, which you think is the best choice for the council?
Well, my recommendation...
I mean, I have my ideas, but I'd like to hear yours.
Yeah. My, my recommendation, it's not a traditional pad, but it also, it is the water element. And I think it's important to keep in mind water consumption and to be eco-friendly. And it's economical. There's no annual costs incurred every year when we run this thing, and the water consumption is much lower than the other options. So I mean, that would be my recommendation. I know it's different, but in these times...
And, and this particular, the wa, the misting pole structures is used elsewhere? I mean, it's not like, I've seen these all over the cities.
These are used elsewhere, yeah. And this, this other one, Playground Structures, it's not the playground manufacturer that we use. We use Miracle, but they have them installed in school playgrounds. And the cool thing about that product is, we can get it to match the actual playground that we have too, the same color design and scheme, so it'll look seamless throughout the playground area. So it just got a neat feature, doesn't really matter, but it'll look neat, because everything will match.
Okay. Uh, council, questions for the director? It's a lot, I know. Any questions?
He's recommending the $60,000.
Yeah, the actual misting poles.
And, and I'll, and we'll add, if you don't mind, that this is all part of the grant project, so this is all funded. The only, the only thing that we do need to figure out, if you do decide to do the InstaSplash recycled system, which is $115,000 in our budget, we have $65,000, $65,000 with a $10,000 contingency. We may have the additional $50,000, but we don't have all our remediation costs yet, so that's an unknown. So that, that, I mean, it still fits within our window, but that's an unknown. The others fit well within our, our project budget. That's all, you know, grant-funded or fundraised.
Landscape Structures or CoolFog?
I don't think he can hear you. He's the last, can you?
Lands, Mike, it's Clark. Landscape Structures or the CoolFog? I'm curious which one you're leaning towards.
The Landscape Structures are the ones that I like, because we can match the color scheme, and it has, that's the one on the picture you see where it's got the big canopy over the top? That's the Landscape Structures one. There's a little bit more to it than the other. The poles by themselves, that's the CoolFog design.
Got it. I'm good.
How is it, Andy?
Not a question, just a statement that I did look up the CoolFog.com website. Yes, it's not a traditional splash pad, but it is a really cool water feature that's used pretty regularly throughout the state, so. I do like the idea of the shades being in place and very all to match, so I'm good with Landscape Structures.
So, do you want to give me a motion and then I'll throw it out to comment?
I move to progress forward with the Landscape Structures. It's a $15,000 for four poles, which are $16,000.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Comments, Ms. Grant?
So, these are misting poles, and they are on consistently throughout the day and, or on and off. And the second part of that question is, what's the ground cover where these will be? I'm just envisioning a mud pit after a little while.
Yep, no. So these could be installed right over grass because most of it evaporates or lay on kids by the time it gets down to that point. And these units have activation switches. So it's a switch with like a spring behind it. So it's tied at three minutes or four minutes. So you press it, the water comes down, and then the switch comes out. So they're not on constantly. So it's only on when kids are playing. So that, I think that assumption of 20,000 gallons using those four hours a day might be a little bit high, depending on, because that's used four hours a day, seven days a week for the 12 weeks. So I think that might be a little bit high. I just say, better safe than not.
Any other comments?
Yeah, we need the motion. If we kill two birds with one stone, so to speak, and...
We did the motion.
Okay, so we may need to revisit it.
We may need to.
Yeah, we may need to revisit it. We need permission for budgetary purposes to be able to use the donated funds.
My side will be a second motion.
Okay.
But, correct?
Not just for this, but for the structure as well. So that those funds that were specifically pledged by the council for a specific thing can now be used for newly proposed things. One of them is the structures. Now whether or not that will happen, this playground fund, we want to be able to use these funds to be able to pay for the playground, including whatever you decide tonight. Please.
Thank you. We don't have the contract or the materials. So we're talking about this thing costing about $60,000 total?
That's correct.
And about how much, the 8,000 gallons of water that it uses, is that per season or per week or?
That's per season. It's 20,000 gallons per season. And that is, I don't know, I think my assumptions were pretty high on these. But that is gallons for 12-week season. Basically June, July, and August, more on, yeah.
Does the city pay water and sewage for those 20,000 gallons of water?
I don't know, that's not a question that I know the answer to.
I'm going to recognize Mr. Chaney who...
Tom?
Oh, yeah, right, okay.
We don't pay for that water.
Well, if you need it, go through the buildings.
But we don't historically, from my knowledge, pay any money.
Right.
Right, they just keep track of it. The treasures department, it just keeps track of it. Does that help? Yeah, it answers the question. We want the questions answered if we can. Anyone else?
There's a question online. Ms. Gerling?
Ms. Gerling?
It's a question, Madam Mayor, for Mr. Brown.
Could you please just direct it through me and I'll direct it to you?
I am, I mean, I don't really have a choice on my line. So I am curious if this has been kid-tested.
Say again, kid, kid, K-I-D?
Yes.
Okay.
Child-tested.
Okay.
And the reason I'm saying this is I'm listening to the description that's being given. And, I mean, it's not a classic splash pad where it's almost like a sprinkler coming down on you. This is just a very thin mist. And the kids aren't really going to get soaking wet by the sound of this. And that's kind of the whole purpose that they go into the splash pad, is to kind of have, you know, like an outdoor shower experience. And so I just don't want to see the city spend a bunch of money and to have it hugely unpopular and not get used.
Okay, thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, I don't know the answer to that. I've just seen pictures from, now I'm looking at pictures from the manufacturers with kids in them. I don't know the answer to that. Yes, it could be, it might not be. I just wanted to find alternatives to the traditional splash pad. That was from the original project seven years ago that it wasn't quite feasible.
Right, thank you.
No, can I just...
Yes, of course.
My main concern at this point is if we go even with the InstaSplash systems, it's pouring out half a million gallons in 12 weeks, which is going to cause issues. Both my children have been to nesting locations before, amusement parks, they absolutely love, they sometimes even prefer that over being dumped on by 100 gallons at a time. But that just touches upon that.
Yeah, I agree with you there. It's always like, oh God, here comes that bucket, right? Okay, so currently we have the motion before us for the $60,000 approval. I want to keep in mind that we're going to hear again from Mr. Chaney on the additional motion that's needed after this. So my question to you council members, would you like to expand it on, change the motion that we have? Would you draw it and bring up the motion inclusive of what Mr. Chaney has just identified to us? Or would you like to do it in two separate motions?
I'm fine with amending it.
Okay.
You have to take yours back first.
Wait, go on, I second.
And draw the first and add the amendment that we use the Gardner Park Playground Funds or Grant Fund, what was it, what's the actual title?
What's the name of the ledger count, Jim?
I don't have it funded, but...
The Gardner Park Grant Fund.
The 213? I think it's 213, you must have it.
No, I do have it, hold on.
Yeah.
165, it's the Gardner Park Improvement Fund.
Yeah, we're going to get the exact thing, if you bear with us.
165, the back of the thing.
Gardner Park Improvement Fund, which currently includes the bond and the donations that have been made, and currently has $271,000.
So be funded with that.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posting aye. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Thank you, Director Brown.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is grant updates. Just a discussion, and then we recognize Mr. Chaney.
I changed my mind. So, Ms. Gerling, I asked to do an update. It would take a whole meeting to give you a real update. I hope give you a brief overview. I spent the last month gathering all of this information together in one spot because it's been spread out all over the place. As you're aware, outside of the police department, who's handled their own, the ones that Mike Welsh or that Karen Finnegan have been administering, there's been a lack of attention to them over the last five to 18 months. Pretty much have it all back together, so I'll give you an idea of where we're at. Generally, we have 25 open grants. Okay? Two of those, however, are secured loan agreements. And four of them are in their closeout section. So theoretically, we have 19 open grants. Okay? Last majority of those have been inactive in many ways, or not started yet, some of which have been procured as many as three or four years ago. Okay? So the last month and a half have been basically trying to mitigate the emergent issues, which I think we've done and avoided any catastrophes. We now have the exact situation identified as far as what the status of each grant is, where the schedule sits, and where we need to go moving forward. I would anticipate that although the next month and a half is going to be very difficult for the downstairs office, for some of the department heads, for myself, I think we can probably get caught up in the next month and a half and get back on schedule. But you're catching up a year's worth of work in a very short period of time. Okay? Individual things. Now, to give you an idea of how much we're talking about, the total grants, okay, are $5.35 million, and an additional $781,000 in secured loan agreements. Those are all open at this particular point in time. Those are current, not closed out, not all used out. Many of them, again, had not, the actual project has not started yet. Okay? So we have a lot to do going forward. Individually, I'll give you some highlights. Water tower. Right, we have invoiced $2.2 million worth of invoices. Should get us back, I think we've got the first 300 back already. Think we should get another 150 in the next week or so. So that money is going to, is starting to come in to replace that. And now we should be able to keep that up going forward. I do have some concerns about, or questions about the revenue side, it's not revenue, the funding side of the budget. I think you're going to address an issue tonight that might mitigate some of that. However, I do think that we need to have a better understanding of exactly where we're going to end up at the end, considering the way the funding is set up on that project as it relates to things like airport bunks. Okay? Gardner Park, I wish you hadn't volunteered for that one. So, the grant agreement, we do not have a grant award. It expired in 2022. That's what we've been working on. Okay? Mike and Carter have been enormously helpful. I did get an email from the state last week that the final thing, which was the samhs.gov membership that had lapsed, has been taken care of, and that we are eminently going to receive, in fact, I was supposed to receive it a couple of days ago, last week, the actual grant award. Okay? That grant award will allow us to bill for the entire grant when the permit has been approved. Okay? So before anybody asks me about the permit, I'm going to tell you, basically had to resubmit it to Sasha, the floodplain manager, because of the structures. Okay? I think I can probably get away with not doing too much based on the decision you made tonight, but I've had to hold off. Sasha's comments came back, they're significant, but not a serious problem. I'm still in hopes of getting this thing approved before the votes in March. Again, waiting for some redesign on the plans because of the recent changes. No more changes. Okay, that would be good. New grant, MERP, I don't know if everybody's aware of this, this is something that Carter Finnegan has been working on. We had the initial meeting, this is brand new, $458,000 for energy efficiency at this building, the fire station, Tom's garage, the sewer plant, and the gateway. Okay, we're just starting to get that rolling, and that's a pretty good, pretty big project. And I think that's going to take a lot of time going forward. The other one that has taken a lot of time that you probably need to know about is Grant Stand. Okay? So, the portal or the membership to the federal grant administration process, we finally, I did get it done. We've been waiting for a couple of years, I think. I got it open four days ago. That allows us to see where we're at as far as compliance in order to move forward. The main question at this particular point is there's a required environmental review, and I am trying to ascertain the status of that at this particular point. That is up in the air. I'm going to make a comment about these grants. This is not free money. Okay? It has become blatantly aware to me, and I'm going to give you my opinion only, that to a certain extent, we have gotten grants in order to get grants. Okay? And we have an awful lot of these projects that haven't been touched at all, and the ones that have are four, five, six years old. Okay? The amount of time that I see people like Tom, all right, and others, this is not free money. All right? I strongly advise in the future that you target a specific need and you get a specific grant. Okay? And then you devote the proper amount of resources to it versus getting money and then not having the project move forward in a timely manner. Okay? And it does require, this is not free money, and that is especially true when you do not have the excess funds in your account. Okay? Because in order to get the 350 for the Causeway project, you've got to come up with an additional 500 between now and then.
And the recommendation is well taken, so we could...
Do I have any questions?
You're good.
I'm not supposed to ask that.
Right, thank you. That's like my mantra.
I am.
No, thank you for that. Council, have any questions? This was just an update at this point in time. We will go into the individual grants going forward in the future. But I just wanted you all to hear what was going on unless you have anything specific to say, Chris.
I thought I'd just report to my advisor and my liaison and have him report back to you.
Thanks. Okay, really, thank you, Mr. Chaney. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the budget adjustment with a potential vote. And I do want everybody to understand that a budget adjustment is a tool that is used mainly, regularly pretty much, but mainly to make sure that you are not managing debt, but that you are thinking through of how to eliminate debt. So we are going to go through some points, and at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Uffet Chase, would you like to walk us through these various operational points that we work through?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, at the mayor's request, I worked with the department heads this week to make any final adjustments, recommendations for adjustments to the council. And the process that we have proposed is that Chris is going to put a copy of the budget up that was approved by council 10 days ago. It is a copy so that if the council approves these adjustments, we can make the changes as we go without touching the one that was original, and have a number in this meeting for what the final implication would be for taxpayers.
And that would go to the treasurer based on the warning we just approved pending the number. Okay? And I think what's very important is that everybody understands that the budget that was approved is frozen, it's not changing unless everything gets approved, and here's where the changes would happen. Okay? So if nothing's approved, the budget's approved stays.
So there are only three adjustments. The first is related to conversation that we had at that special budget meeting, and it's for the council to consider moving the recycling center expense from the city operations budget under the tab Other Admin to an appropriation, which would allow the voters to decide if this is something that they would like to continue to fund. So if the impact of it would be $49,848, I believe, there is some amount of that expense that we would not be able to relieve the city of if the adjustment is approved. And what would happen is that money would be taken out of this budget this evening and then put before the voters on, you know, on the town meeting day. And just to be clear, if the voters then approve it, it taxes... And, just to be clear, if the voters then approve it, taxpayers are still paying for that recycling center, but now it's a choice that the taxpayers have made about whether or not they want to approve this portion of the budget. So, do you wanna let me do all three of them, and then go back and do them one by one?
I do.
Okay. So the budget implication would be a reduction of $49,848 in the expense of the city operating budget.
Thank you.
Okay? The second one is regarding the allocation of the treasurer's salary and benefits. The budget is approved by council at the special meeting on January 17th, proposed moving 12.5% of the three salaried positions in the treasurer's office to the sewer budget, and another 12.5% to the water budget. After researching and looking at this carefully, it does seem likely that charging any of the treasurer's office expense to the water budget is a potential violation of the charter. So the recommendation for the council's consideration this evening, the adjustment that we're asking the council to consider, would be to move that 12.5% that we allocated in that budget we approved from the admin line in the water and sewer budget, back to the city treasurer's line in the regular city operating budget. And the implication of that would be a $10,218 reduction in the water and sewer budget, and a $10,218 increase in the city operating budget. And I'll just note that 12.5% of the city clerk and treasurer's office expense of salary that was allocated to sewer would remain where it is, in the sewer budget. Excuse me. Shall I move to the next one?
Please.
Okay. And the third one is in the water and sewer budget. There is a line, and maybe, Chris, if you could go to it so that people can see, it might make that a little bigger if you could, too. Thank you. That's better. Thank you. And, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna speak to this and then invite Mr. Bernier to correct me if I've stated it incorrectly. Okay? This line that is red for $60,000 in the proposed budget, the budget that we now approved for water well redevelopment, that's a line that we approved. There is a sinking fund, and I can review all of the sinking funds in another moment in the evening, but there is a sinking fund that has actual money protected in it that is called Water Treatment Facility, and it currently has $213,000 in that sinking fund. And at Mr. Bernier's suggestion, which I wholeheartedly agree with, we are proposing that the council consider taking the well redevelopment project funds of, it will amount between $60,000 and $65,000 in this coming year, out of that sinking fund, rather than out of the water and sewer budget. So if the impact if the council approves the adjustment would be to zero out that $60,000 line, and it would be a $60,000 improvement in the budget. And those are the three adjustments we're considering.
And just before you move on, and I believe, we're good, Mr. Bernier?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry.
So do you wanna go back and just do them one at a time now?
I do.
Okay. So, the appropriate motion for the first adjustment regarding the recycling center would be to remove the appropriate portion of the recycling center budget from the operating budget totaling $49,848, and place it before the voters as a, an appropriation request, or an appropriation.
Right. Are you making that?
And I will make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Comments?
Miss Green. So typically appropriations are done by a group or advertising, people stand out, get, you know, signatures to put it on the ballot every year, blah, blah, that kind of stuff. This has been something that the city has offered, so how will the residents of Newport understand this? Is the city going to come out with, uh, this is what's going on? How will the voters know until they walk into, you know, to vote in March?
Discuss it, right? As far as doing this legally, this is, we can do this this way. It will definitely be up on, um, in KTV, okay? But we will be, remember, we have our town meeting, et cetera, that comes forward, where you have the opportunity to ask those questions as well. And I am sure that our reporters will be putting this in the paper. But yes, we will be, once we get this done, I will be doing some updates for the public, so it's not going to just be, you have to pay attention to this.
And is it, like, going to be an ongoing thing for every year after that? Assuming that, assuming that the people vote to have it, will it go to appropriation every year?
Well, so I can't predict the council people, I could never do that, nor can anybody here do that. What I think we're trying to do right now is something that has been near and dear to the people's heart, but we're trying to identify maybe a better way to deal with it and let the voters make that decision on this particular one. As far as the other issues, we're trying to clean up all processes. That should not have happened, to make sure going forward that everybody's kind of following the intent of the charter and, you know, what treasurer's salaries, et cetera. But on this one, to turn around and say it's going to be something for the future, we couldn't, I couldn't even go there. So every council, you know, the council would have to go forward with that. Because let's say they turn around and they say they don't want to do it, so you don't know the outcome of what's gonna happen. I mean, I wish I could, but I can't. Okay? Yes?
This is a decision that will actually affect real people, not just taxpayers, but there are two people who are employed at the recycling center. They know nothing about this. It would be kind and responsible to let them know, which then gives them the opportunity to lobby those who come to the recycling center and share the information, so that they're letting people who come in there know they could lose privilege of going there if they don't vote for it.
And I don't disagree with what you're saying, but we have to vote first before we can identify to them what's going on. So after tonight?
Yeah.
They can be told, but we, you can't tell them this is going to happen until...
Except it was discussed at previous meetings.
It was discussed, but it wasn't a council decision.
True.
So we just need to make the council decision, and then after that, appropriate information will be shared with the appropriate people in the proper way.
There's a hand up. Ms. Green.
Ms. Green.
So, I'm not feeling real good about this at all, and the reason I'm not feeling good about it is because I'm not finding it to be very, I don't, I'm not finding it to be honest. I think what really is going on here is that the council, through many decisions that have been made throughout the past, you know, year, in terms of new positions that have been added here and there, and other expenses that have been approved, has found themselves now in a pickle where, you know, the budget is coming in at a percentage rate that is probably gonna be problematic getting taxpayers to approve. And you are trying desperately to get that percentage lowered, and so you're basically taking this issue and putting it out there for, as an appropriation, so that you can hold out to the public a lower percentage increase in the budget of the operational portion of it, and kind of put it on the backs of the voters in reference to whether or not they want to keep their recycling center, which has always been part of the general operational budget in all the years that I've been in Newport, and I would argue probably many years before that. And I think that this is a smoke and mirrors, you know, approach to try to serve your own agendas of trying to lower this overall percentage in the operational budget, and not take the hit for what's been going on, and the increases that have resulted from decisions made at that council table. And I think it's gonna confuse voters. I just think that this is a really underhanded way to try to deal with the problem that the council has created for themselves.
And I appreciate your comment and your position, and that's why we are having people make their statements. And thank you very much, and obviously, the council does not agree with the position, but you are entitled to yours, so thank you for that comment. Anybody else? Am I missing any? Any further discussion? Sure.
What happens if the voters don't approve this? Then what do we do with recycling, and how much we back?
I can answer that. So, the waste haulers that pick up people's trash in the city, they all by law have to offer recycling. So, they pick up your trash and they pick up your recycling at the same time. We are waiting, I'm waiting to hear back from Casellas, the people that take their own track to Casellas, because there may be another nominal fee to get rid of recyclables on their own. The waste haulers are supposed to by law pick up H-Curve.
Does that help? Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and that motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Bernier.
Before we move on to the next adjustment?
Yes. We're going to...
Can we go to the numbers for a second?
Yes.
So, Chris, if you could go to the recap page first, so that people can understand how this is gonna flow through.
Let me fix that.
Oh, you were already doing that, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
You were ahead, step ahead.
Everything's...
There we go. And then scroll down to the, there we go. Okay, so where it says taxes to be raised, that number, 5,000, 5,290,268,68, is the number approved on the 17th for the taxes to be raised. And so as we make any adjustments in the budget, you will see them flow through to this number here, and in a few minutes, we'll have the final impact of any adjustments we make, and we'll know what that taxes to be raised number is. So if you can go back now to other, and now, we'll just zero out the recycling expense, the salaries, the social security, the workers' comp, and the unemployment insurance. Those things add up to 49,847.50, basically.
Just to clarify for myself, other personal expenses?
Other professional expenses?
Professional expenses. Is that for trainings or anything, or is that just removed?
What's the number that says?
4,000.
$4,000.
That's, because we utilize Casella to help us do our solid waste implementation plan, so they help us send that in, so that's put that through the loop.
Thank you. Okay. Ready to move on to the next one?
Okay, so on to the next one.
Okay. The second adjustment proposed would require a motion to remove $10,218, which is 12.5% of the combined salaries, vacation, and holiday pay from the water budget, and put it in the administrative line under city treasurer's office, in the admin line in the operating budget. And I will move it.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comment, Ms. Green? Yes, I should be grateful. And I thank you for doing that. Thank you for being grateful. I had to say that. But, you know, when the charter was written back in the beginning of the 1900s, it just mentioned water, because we didn't have a sewer plant then, that came later. So, we've always assumed, you know, and then we had the water and sewer commissioners that were really part, that were you guys, too. And it said that somewhere in the charter, too. But I don't know that when sewer came in, people didn't say, well, whatever should happen in the treatment of admin with respect to water is the way we do it with sewer. So, I don't, I don't know whether or not that happened anywhere along the way in this process until we get to now, if the council ruled on it at some point. But I was certainly thinking, while the words are specific, there's no real reason to treat the sewer situation with respect to billing any differently than water. And I think when you move it back from water, from water into the regular general fund, you should move sewer, too. But I don't have the statute, I'm sorry, not the statute.
So, I'm just gonna jump in, okay, on that. So those are, those are legal decisions, and we have city lawyers to, like, seriously on top of this, so at this point in time, this is the best direction.
I hear you.
To go. Because I can't go into opinions, nothing's formal, but this is, everybody's aware.
Okay. Okay. Any comment here? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
Guys, before we move on, let me just make sure I'm moving on to the next one. So, admin, sewer, stay the same, it's just admin, water.
Correct.
So, regular pay.
There it is. Underwater admin, right there.
So you're taking...
Yes.
$10,818 out of that.
$10,218.
$218. Do you have the number, or you want me to give the calculation?
No, sorry, I don't have the number.
I prefer more ayes on it, so I won't mess up. Ooh. Gonna miss you, Mr. President.
Well, maybe, if you got this summer.
I'm glad. What?
Taking time.
There we go. All right, we have 62, 396, 54, minus 10,218.
Correct.
So our new number is 52,178. I can't copy that. I just can't copy that.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a quick question while we get on to that? I'm sure you didn't take 12.5%, also, it should be 25%. 10,000 seems a little over me.
No, the total of 25%, if my calculation was correct, is $20,436. So 12.5% is 10,000.
25% of 218,000 is more than 20,000.
Uh-oh.
So the...
So, we're...
No, you're right, I understand what you're saying. No, Jim, you're...
I don't think that's right.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna look at this, Jim, and so let's do this number crunch, Jim.
Yeah, I'm saying, hold on a minute.
So if you take, two water and sewer together, take 25% of 218, that's $54,000.
So we move 25.
And take half of that.
Is the 10,000, so you need to...
Half of the 54 went to water, so it should be...
Looks to me like I took a quarter.
No, 28.
You took a quarter of it.
Yeah. Well, I think that should be, I think what should be in the treasurer's salary line should be 109,000 and some odd. If you add 28 to 81, come to 109. I'd have to figure it out. Give me a second.
It's okay.
I appreciate that, why we're doing this here, so... That's right.
That's exactly right, that's why we're sitting and doing it here, too.
All right, 54,558. 27,279. That's what should be added back in. That's what should be added back in.
If there is something.
That's what should be taken out, Chris, and then added back to the treasurer's.
Thank you. I'm really sorry. Thank you for taking that.
I'm just thinking 10,000.
Treasurer and clerk, or just treasurer?
Just treasurer.
So...
Sorry.
27...
Don't apologize.
It didn't sound...
It's 27,279.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Don't apologize.
So now we need to change the order.
Okay, but let's just make sure we get the number right. It's just an adjustment to the motion. It's just the number.
Is this the number that you came up with? 109?
109, wow, whatever, 81, I didn't add it.
Take that out of expenses.
Correct.
So they're taking the 27,279 out of the salaries here?
Out of water and then, yeah.
That was the original number, right, Chris? That 62,396 is the number as approved about two weeks ago? Yes, so we're going to subtract, so 62,3...
Ooh, must not be that.
If you don't get the 27,279, you have 109.
That's right.
There we go.
So what you want to do is amend the motion for that number. You want to amend the 10,218.
Yes, so with the permission of the second, Chris.
I'll draw the second.
And I'll withdraw the original and I'll amend the motion so that we are removing a total of $27,279 representing 12.5% of the total salary package, the salary vacation and package for the treasurer clerk's office from the admin line in the water budget and moving it to the treasurer's office line as according to the treasurer's calculation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried. Thank you for that.
I apologize.
No, listen, I just feel like I...
Don't apologize, that's why we're here.
Junior high math class where I never did all that great either, so.
Here's your rule going forward, by council member, never do math.
Exactly. All right, are we ready to move to the third? Chris, are you caught up there?
Yes.
Okay, so moving to the final adjustment. This one, I can get the math right on, I know. This would be a motion to dedicate $60,000 from the sinking fund for the water treatment facility to whatever amount is necessary, 60 to 65,000.
I have one, possibly the only proposal, for 65,990.
65,990.
So we, what we're moving though would be to dedicate the payment, the full payment of that project from the, what's that name again? The...
WTF.
No, this one's the water, yes, okay, the water treatment facility. And that means that the implication for the water and sewer budget is that we would zero out the $60,000 item that was approved 10 days ago or so.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Who else? For the discussion?
Is a hand online?
Ms. Brown?
So by statute, when you have these sinking funds, there's supposed to be a very specific narrow purpose identified for the use of those sinking funds. And that's the only reason, or the only, that the funds in that sinking fund can only be used for that very specific narrow purpose. I have no idea what the purpose is of this sinking fund from which you're taking the money, but you're going to need to check as to whether or not it falls under the purpose of that sinking fund because if it doesn't, you're in violation of the statute.
Thank you for your comments. And to the public, please understand that we welcome these types of comments. These are legal matters. Please do not assume that these things have not been researched, but we welcome all comments. Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Can I ask, get a clearance? Are we using the 65,990 figure or are we using the total cost or whatever?
The way the motion was made would dedicate the full cost of that, the full cost of that invoice would be paid from that sinking fund. The implication for the budget, because we had only put $60,000 as a line item in there, is that it would have a $60,000 impact to the good for the water and sewer budget.
Okay.
Yeah, he gave a figure.
Yeah, so kind of.
It takes clarification, not Jim.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried.
Are we moving on to the next thing?
Yes.
Okay, so we've done budget adjustments.
So let's make sure we have all of your budget adjustments?
I have the three that we voted upon and changed.
Okay.
So maybe we should just go back and take a quick look at the recap page.
And this will be what you will need with the charge number?
So that's our new number, taxes to be raised, 5,267,720.20.
700.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the appropriations discussion with a potential vote.
Do we need the budget up anyway? Do we want the budget up still or?
Think we need it, no.
Just started to go down.
I don't think I have a thing here, other than the implication of the decision we just made on the recycling.
Right, so that's all we're going to say, is that on the appropriations discussion, we've already dealt with that since there were no other appropriations that needed to be shifted at this point in time. We're all good. That was just Kevin, it was just the recycling. Okay, next item on the agenda is to uncommit private capital commitments with a potential vote.
I'm going to take that one?
I shall too.
Okay, so we've had considerable discussion over the last couple of meetings about the practice that the department heads have appropriately employed over a number of years to plan ahead for significant capital expenditures. And as they did so, their assumption was, I'll just give an example, if somebody expected to buy a $75,000 pickup truck and they put $25,000 away this year, $25,000 next year, and $25,000 the year after that, the $75,000 would be there to buy the pickup truck. Some of those funds were moved into an appropriate sinking fund related to that intention in the budget to move capital expenditures into that area and reserve them. On the commitment of the council, this is a commitment that the council made. In some instances, those sinking funds exist, but, but they do not have the full amount that the capital expenditures, if you were watching year by year in the budget, would suggest that they probably should have. In other instances, no sinking fund was created. And therefore, the assumption was that the city, when the time came, would simply take the money from the reserve to make the expected purchase of that pickup truck, for instance, that mythical pickup truck. So we have done a careful look with help from the treasurer and I can read a list of the current sinking funds and their balances. And then I have a motion, I would propose a motion that I'll describe after I read these sinking funds. Right now, we have a sinking fund called Vector Truck with $160,000 in it. We have a wastewater treatment facility fund, sinking fund, with $117,741. We have a sinking fund called Water Tower with $160,270. We have a sinking fund we were just referring to, the water treatment facility, that up until our action tonight had a balance of $213,000 in it, minus the $65,000 we just agreed to pull out of it for the well, for the well water redevelopment this year. We have a reservoir cover sinking fund that currently has $55,000 in it. We have a CDBG fund that has $30,000 remaining in it, has been around some considerable length of time. And Jim's research suggests that it's, it had been, it was being spent, that fund was being spent in the past on property or property improvements. And it's sitting there, it hasn't been touched in quite a while. We have a rec trust fund with $4,900. This is money that is typically raised by the recreation committee and its use is controlled by the, by decisions of the recreation committee. We have a fund called the Babe Ruth Project dedicated to the playing fields that currently has $10,000 in it. We have a Proudie Beach sinking fund with $1,425 in it. We have an ice rink sinking fund with $8,000 in it. We have the Gardner Park Improvement Fund, which we referred to during the conversation with Mike Brown, that currently has $271,000 in it and it includes both the bond and the donations to that fund. We're almost done here. We have a Performing Arts Center sinking fund, which I'll just say, I think refers to the hay wagon in Gardner Park. And currently has $1,000 in it. And finally, we have a rec trust scholarship fund with $22,000 in it, which I understand has been established and used over the years to scholarship kids for camp. That adds up to 13 different funds that are sinking funds, meaning they were funds committed by the council but not designated by law. Did I say that correctly?
You got it.
Okay. In addition, there are three restricted funds that are in fact designated, that can only be spent on their intended purpose, regardless of what the council may decide. One is the reappraisal fund that's preparing for the reappraisal that we will be needing to be doing over the next several years. That currently has $107,044 in it. There is the Walmart fund that we've been discussing this evening that currently has $395,607 in it. And we have a tennis court resurfacing fund that is restricted, that has $7,274 in it. I know that's a lot and it took quite a bit to get it all sorted. So given the current reality, which is that funds in the past, budgets were approved by both council and voters in the past that included transfers of capital expenditure or use of capital expenditures. But not all of that money ended up in appropriate sinking funds and, and committed for that purpose. The first recommendation that we would make this evening would be that council consider a motion to uncommit all capital expenditure funds approved in previous budgets that were not protected in a sinking fund. I'll just say that one more time. This would be a motion that council consider uncommitting all capital expenditure funds approved in previous budgets that were not protected in a sinking fund. And if you'd like me to make that in the form of a motion.
Yeah, and I'd like you to make the motion and everybody should understand that it has to be done before the next quarter. That's, we've spoken with the auditors as well.
Yes, so I'll make that motion.
I have a motion or have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any comments?
Yes, I just need some clarification. I don't really understand which funds we're talking about now. Are you uncommitting everything but the three restricted funds?
Would you like me to speak to that?
I do.
No, that's a really good question. We are not actually proposing that we uncommit any of the funds I just read to you. All we're doing is saying that any funds from previous budgets that we had said we would use for capital expenditures that didn't get put in one of those funds already, we are uncommitting. So it has no impact, this motion has no impact on current sinking funds and certainly no impact on restricted funds.
Yes.
I have a question. You had mentioned that there are three funds, almost Walmart was protected. Did you just put money on that fund, Tony?
It was used for the appropriate.
Was for, okay, just before clarification.
Yes, that's what I said to him when we spoke about that. We said the contract that we reviewed, looked at it, and the treasurer, I also said very specifically during that timeframe that that's exactly what it was supposed to be used for. That's why we're able to do it. Yes, Mr.?
Was that, was that recommended by the auditors from last year? Did, did this recommendation, was that recommended by the auditors?
Okay, so I want to be really clear. First of all, when you say recommended by the auditors, what are you asking? It was recommended, the uncommitment?
Yes.
Yes, the uncommit, I, we discussed, that's, it has to be done prior. It was definitely a discussion and it was, said, yes, you need to uncommit and now going forward, do it appropriately, because this has been going on for a long time. Oh, yes.
Yeah, so, you know, it's like a math question, I just want to make sure I fully understand. So the first part of this is, the list that you read off, there is actual dollars in, somewhere, there's actual dollars in those funds. Okay, so what you're saying is that if in a year where there was, the 25,000 was, said, yeah, we're going to use this for a truck, but if it wasn't done, if it wasn't moved into the sinking fund, it's not there.
Correct.
And we're, we're separating ourselves from that commitment.
Yes.
Is that's, that's what I'm understanding.
Distinct funds.
Yes, yes, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Obligations that were made that were not followed through versus the ones identified that actually have the obligation there.
Would you have a hand on mine?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
So, Madam Mayor, this goes to the list that was read off. How many of those funds that were listed off are water and sewer versus general fund? Because it's different for water and sewer and I'm just nervous that maybe decisions are being made without that awareness that it's different for water and sewer. You don't have the leeway that you have with the stuff in the general fund. I mean, it's, I, I'm just, I'm really sitting here getting nervous that we're not making informed decisions at the council table, that's all. I, because the, the ones that are in water and sewer, if, if it's, if they're, if that money's in there, then it's got to go back to the, to the taxpayers in the form of like rate reductions or whatever. You don't have the leeway to just liquidate it and use it for other stuff.
So thank you for your comment and, you know, and, you know, I'm sorry that you're nervous, but these are issues that were discussed with appropriate advisors. Sure.
Tom, sit here. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but in prior years, it was a practice to budget certain amounts, we'll name the sinking funds, I believe, in debt service, re-budget for sinking funds. We haven't done that in the last couple of years. These committed funds, like Tom was saying, you got 75,000 for a truck but didn't get spent, they were going into a reserve fund, which now doesn't exist.
Right, and that's exactly.
They weren't, I don't think Tom thought they were going into a sinking fund. He thought they were going into a reserve, which...
So, yeah, I just want to, as we discussed a couple times, so we are talking basically the reassigned funds. That's what we're talking about, where I'm committing. So I, and I don't, I'm not saying I don't disagree with what we need to do. I just want to make it a point to say that, you know, of course I have the lion's share there of what we think we should have had, which would be over a million bucks for me. which would be over a million bucks for me, which would include Causeway Project, reconstruction, a truck that's on order. And I just want to make it clear to everybody that I'm basically losing a year of paving money. That's really what this is going to go out to.
Right. And we discussed that, we are absolutely right, we discussed that, but we're still not done. Okay, so we're just at this phase right now of the uncommitment. Okay, so, Ms. Hopkins?
Yes, I have a question. Why did the auditors not bring this up before?
Okay, thank you for your comment. I can't speak to auditors, and I can't say if they had not brought it up before. All I can say is to what I'm dealing with under our leadership here. Okay, so I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor, please...
I have, Kevin.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin, I apologize.
That's all right.
How much money are we actually talking?
I don't have that number, Kevin. It's, I'd have to go back through every budget and figure out all the capital expenditures that were proposed in those budgets. Then you'd have to figure out, on the expense side, what was actually spent, and the remainder of that is what ought to be there. I can give you an example of one.
I think I could help a little.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's quite all right. I think that because it's been such an ongoing situation, it would have forced us to go out and finance as things came in, and we think that that million dollar number is always going to be rotating, that $800,000 to $900,000 number is what we're dealing with. So, at this point in time, we need to undo that, and we need to go forward appropriately so when department head or people think that there's X amount of dollars there, it's real. And so, I would say that that $800,000 that we've been looking at continually and trying to refinance, et cetera, is about that number that you're looking at.
I mean, if, at the time, the councils, your market for, you know, this piece of equipment or that piece of equipment, should it go back to the department that was expecting it?
And so, going after this, we're going to go forward with appropriately doing that, and not just putting it into funds that do not belong to the specific department. So, your question is, are we taking away from Department A and just letting it happen in Department B? We're designating it where those departments should have it.
Okay.
So, well, I want you to, I want to, I see that you're not quite sure.
Well, I, no, I, I guess, you know, I might be in a hard time.
No, it's okay.
We're talking about money in the past, you know, whatever, and now it's just kind of unassigned, or whatever was there, people forgot, that we're moving it to the capital or the...
Can I try one more time?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So, I really appreciate your question, and I feel a certain kind of way about this too. It's a hard reality, and my own judgment is that we've got to figure out how to kind of start over. So, I'll just say, to make Tom's point in language I have tried to simplify as much as possible, that council should recognize that even where sinking funds were established, the fund balance is, in most cases, significantly lower than what was intended based on the capital expenditures that were approved in previous budget years. That's because an allowance for transfers to be allocated did not happen. The budget was passed, but the money was never physically transferred into a sinking fund that matched. It was left in the reserve with the assumption that somehow it would get taken care of. That, a great example of this is Tom's effort to put aside money for this critically important Vector truck in the Public Works Department. That fund currently has $160,000 in it. By Tom's calculation and any reasonable estimation, that fund should have well over $400,000 in it right now, and it's likely to cost us $600,000 plus, is that right, Tom? To replace that truck that he was hoping to replace in the next couple of years. So, in effect, what we're saying is, we're not going to touch the $160,000 that's in there, but we're uncommitting all the previous obligations because there's no money to match it. And it means that future councils are going to have to wrestle together with Tom to try and figure out how we deal with this critical need. Because the need doesn't go away just because the money's not sitting in the sinking fund. So, that's, that's one.
And that choice may be for the future council to say, well, we have to finance, that we have to do, so you have the choice, but you will know the real number needed then.
And so, the second point I would make is that I think what we're in the process of doing is establishing policies to assure in the future that capital expenditures that are approved in a budget will be protected. And I do believe that the council is going to need to take this up as a separate matter, which I would recommend we state an intention to do tonight, but not try and do tonight. It seems to me that we need to look at a number of other questions, like how to address the deficit in the water and sewer budget, and address the rates questions, clean those things up, and then I would recommend we make a commitment to come back to this, or state an intention at least, to come back to this in the month of March and revisit how we want to address these sinking fund questions, because they are not resolved with this action. And then finally...
And then just, I'm sorry, but we do have that, and after we vote on this, that intention is the next motion that we will be bringing up, so that going forward, you'll be focusing on making sure that this doesn't happen again, and your policies are there, and everything goes forward, okay?
And then the last piece that was what I've been wrestling with is I've been trying to figure this out, is that there are several significant, particularly public works projects and vehicles that are quite likely to hit in the next six months to a year. And so, the council will have to concretely address those questions as they appear, and figure out how we're going to finance or resolve those challenges. Can we just ask Tom if I've misstated anything from this perspective?
Yeah, sure, but also, if you don't mind, that's also going to include the Causeway, Reed, the Roundman Project, and it's going to include the truck, at least one truck that he has out there, and anything else that comes forward. So, yes.
Yeah, as I just fortunately gave you that slip this morning for that new truck.
Thank you for that.
That's only a portion of that truck, of $117,000 and change, and I do not, in my current budget, have that full amount to cover that truck. I just want to say, you know, and I think, Rick, you did say, we tried to budget ahead for projects. If you look at the Causeway project, we should have had $400,000 in there. There was always a surplus. This reassigned spreadsheet that we all department heads have, every year after we get the audit back, if we didn't spend those capital funds, that money was there, physically was there. The problem is, we've spent it elsewhere. And I think that's maybe what you're not getting across to everybody here, that it was spent water and sewer elsewhere, and the funds should have been there. That's why we are going to have a problem. The Causeway is going to happen this year, and that's going to be at least a half million, that truck's almost $200,000.
Yeah, I think we did get it across. We've been talking about that over the past several meetings, because it wasn't, remember, it's not cash. We talked about that, the whole obligation, and it's going to be there. But I think we got it under control now, and we've got it going forward so that the historical practice won't continue, and now we're going to clean up and go forward, so you'll know what's happening. Okay, so, I have a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Pam has her hand up, and we have Dennis Chanel on line.
Okay, so, one second. So, we've already done that part, okay? We're back here now for the vote. So, on this point, the council has had it. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
And Madam Mayor, I would make that, do you want that intention in the form of a motion?
So, right now, I do, I want to go there.
So, then, as I said a moment ago, we clearly have a significant set of questions that we have to wrestle with. I don't think we're ready to do it until we address the questions around the water and sewer budget and the deficit. There's a number, there are a number of questions out there that really have to take precedence. So, I would feel comfortable tonight, and I'll make this as a motion, to state our intention to return to the question of how to protect capital expenditure monies for future capital expenses.
The enforcement of which the council will take up?
In March, in March, yes. I would like to ask us to do that in the month of March.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Comments?
It's the same comment I was going to make before. How many years back are we going?
Please stay with this motion.
Okay. How many years back is this?
This motion is going forward.
Okay. No matter.
Further discussion? All those in favor, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Okay, next. We're good on that, we discussed, okay. Next. Item on the agenda is the authorization of the Skiking funds. Is it Skiking or Skicking? I remember Skiking. Who's addressing this one? Do we take this off?
I don't know what it is.
Okay, let's eliminate that one.
I don't know, it wasn't...
I was wondering whether... Okay, the next item on the agenda is the water and sewer rate discussion. Okay.
Sorry, it's the authorization for sinking funds, and I just...
Oh, I was wondering, I thought Skiking was a plane. I was...
I knew what it was. I knew it was sinking.
Let's make the mayor look like one. Skiking, I thought that whole plane, a TV show.
You need to be chock-a-block.
Yes, I know.
Okay, so let's roll it back now, the authorization of the sinking funds.
I think that's the vote we just made, to address that question.
That's correct. So, we did it, and we're done. Okay.
We just didn't know how to fish it forward.
Thank you for your typing expertise.
I'm really going to copy and paste.
Okay, so we're now, we're now on to the water and sewer rate discussion. You up?
Sure.
Go for it.
Well, just kick us off, I think it's, you know, my comments are brief. I've said this before, I'll say it again. I think we now have a clear idea of what our expense in the water and sewer budget is for the coming year. And as we've discussed now repeatedly, we have had a practice of not addressing the gap between rate payer income and expense to run that program. We have dealt with a significant presenting problem, which was the allocation of administrative overhead from the operations budget to water and sewer. By taking those items out, putting them back where I believe they rightfully belong in the operations budget. So, that's been dealt with. And I'm actually, I'll just say, I'm very proud of the budget that our department heads have turned in, that we've now approved, because that 200 and whatever it was, $50,000 increase over last year's budget that was approved includes all of the money coming back out of water and sewer. So, I think our department heads did a remarkable job of trying to make this work this year. So, having said all of that, I would like to see us have a process by which we can have a thoughtful conversation over the next month about how to address the rate paid, the rates that we will charge for water and sewer in the fairest way possible that takes full responsibility for the actual cost of running that operation, the water and sewer operations. I'll say that much and stop.
Okay, so on that note, unless the council has anything else to say, I'm going to ask the president and the council when we're working on the agenda for that in February to continue this discussion going forward. Anything else you want to discuss on that, or are we good to move forward on that? It'll be on February's agenda, so we have time to look at it. The next item on the agenda is the bond to fund the Eastside Water Tower project. Mr. Cheney?
You want me to present this? So, originally, the council had voted to, for a bond to fund the Water Tower project. And that bond was never secured. You did secure a $2.4 million construction loan. And at this particular point, I guess the question is, and my advisement would be, that you re-pursue the idea of a bond as we enter into the end stages of this project. You want me to go further into it?
Sure.
How?
I would like you to say that we've already approved the bond, so now it's just a matter of securing the bond.
Yes, that's correct.
I didn't get that. It's just a matter of actually securing the bonds at this point. We've already, you've already voted for the bond, so it doesn't need to have a revote for the bond. The bond was already voted.
It was approved by the full city.
Figure out how much of that bond you need to go after, because we spent Aqua Funds, we get the special money credit, so is it going to turn into a loan, a loan for the amount we borrowed at the end? So, you guys subtract that from the $400,000.
Yeah, and again, the accounting, I can help you with that. However, I believe that you get the full amount, and then you'll use only a certain portion. And partly the reason why I advise that is that based on the budget I saw, I think that you may end up with a shortfall, and that there's some miscalculation in the amount of money that's available.
Right. And then there's IRS matters that I've already looked at, and we'll address those. So, the treasurer and I could start to talk about that, and then we could make sure that... Right, and we'll look at, we'll talk about that, and then we'll bring it to the council in February. Good?
No.
No?
No, all this, all this, you know, just, just... That side of the table, or at least you and Rick, seem to know a lot more than I do. You've got sinking funds, numbers, and now a bond to fund the Eastside Water Tower. That what was approved?
It was already voted on.
By the public?
By the public.
Okay, what happened?
Nobody applied for it.
Who should have applied for it?
Well, the treasurer's office with the assistance of the appropriate, whoever was in the city manager's office at that time.
So, that sounded disrespectful, who didn't do their...
Clearly, nothing was done appropriately from the people who were there at that point in time. That's why we are now...
I don't know what that means.
It means that historically, the people who sat in those positions did not go for the bond.
Former council people, former...
Well, the council people don't vote for the bonds. The council people do not physically go and apply for the bond. It would be your treasurer working with the city manager.
So, it's not, okay.
Well, it's not you. You, as a council member, do not go and apply for the bond.
Yeah, I know that.
Okay, so, we are, we're kind of clear on the fact of what we're doing right now, saying these things were not done.
By the treasurer's office, GM, city...
By the people who were in charge of those matters prior.
I may be able to clarify it.
Yeah, but I don't want it to be...
Go on.
What I'm saying right now is, it doesn't matter if it was a city manager's job, or treasurer's job, or the janitor's job, or the secretary's job. What matters right now is that we have an issue, and we need to go forward, and we need to deal with it. But yes, go right ahead.
So, initially, the entire project minus X was funded by this bond. Okay, at some point, for whatever reason, prior to my involvement, they decided, someone decided that they would take the APF funds, the grant of $977, plus a construction loan to make up for that project. Now, the issue is, is that first of all, there was a delay in that happening, which you ended up having to go get this construction loan. You had a cash crunch. What I'm concerned about is that if those revenue numbers or those fund numbers are not accurate, and there are some issues with them, I believe that you're going to run into that same cash flow problem, and the city has already approved the bond.
Correct.
So, if you set the bond up at $4 million, okay, and you only use 3.5, well, that's fine. But by setting the bond up for the appropriate amount, you do not run yourself into a cash flow problem because you underfunded what the public has directed you to do. So, I don't necessarily think there was anything negligent. I guess, I think that the choices, the choice... I guess, I think that the choices, the choice was made quickly.
But I think also, what you want, what we're saying here is that, I hear a council member cursing, cancel oversight required. And you have been speaking continually about not getting appropriate reports historically, but now, you need to be sure you get them, and you need to be sure going forward. But if the council doesn't say, in my opinion, oh, we're only as good as what we're told, you need to be told, and you need to say, tell me, so that you have the information.
So, there isn't any more money collect that you're spending? It's just you haven't borrowed the full amount that I think you need? And if you don't use it off on, however, let's not run into another cash flow problem because we underfunded it from the beginning.
And then, yes...
I understand Frank saying about bond, the full amount of the bond. Bond, the board gave the city opposition to go out to the bond, all right? Nobody ever directed me to get the, get the bond.
Right, and that's what I'm saying.
What they decided to do was take that 4.9 million, use the Aqua Funds, the 1.2 or 3 million, use that up, and then take this construction loan, and use up the 2.4 of that, which is going to wind up being a loan for whatever you use of it. Okay? And that's the, that's the rule that they, who they is, that they decided to go, and that's where we are today.
And that's, that's very important, and that's what I was trying to say. At this point in time, it doesn't matter who they was. It matters going forward that you proceed appropriately.
But the city never authorized...
And it doesn't, and you don't fall back into that lax mode, and you continue to keep the policies of decompliant.
Right. But up to this point...
And talk to them enough.
Yeah. Up to, up to this point, nobody's authorized to go get that bond.
Right.
The city said you could, but nobody said go do it.
Right. So, I want to put that, please, on the February council meeting, so that we can make a decision to make that authorization going forward, after we have some discussion and some number crunching. Thank you. Now, there's no, nothing before, you got to get this point in time, but thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is management office position needs. This is just a discussion. And I'm going to let you speak to the potential needs going forward, or just as an open discussion just here for the council to kind of see what we need. We have an add-out at this point in time, and we're getting some applications in, okay? We know we're going to need, at least from what I've seen, some of you understands the UN resources side, and somebody who can work diligently, has a legal background, would be fantastic. And we know we need a CPA person, or at least a candidate, or somebody who's qualified to do those numbers and to get that office in place. So, I'm going to let you speak to some of what you've seen, and what you might think is, you know, just a general.
My comments will be brief. At the council's direction, we advertised for the position called Financial into Office Administrator. I posted those, I think it was just under three weeks ago. They ran with vermontcpa.org or com, and they ran in the seven days for a week, Chronicle for a week, the Express daily for a week, on a daily basis for a week, and for two weeks on the Newport Dispatch. I did not renew any of them. I just let them sit. It's not inexpensive to do this. And the result is that we do have several candidates who have expressed interest in that position. So, that's really all I'm prepared to speak to right now.
That's good. And we'll be bringing those people, you know, certain people in for some interviews, and I anticipate that you, once you are new, everybody votes for who's going to be sitting up here, you'll probably get more, because people like to see a little bit of who's going to be in which position is going forward. So, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there as an update. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the council member conflict of interest statement per the statute. When somebody has a conflict of interest, issue that's possibly a conflict of interest, it's required now that a statement be made and given to the council. And we had that addressed, I think it was two meetings ago, and I want everybody to know that the council member did in fact provide his statement per session. Okay, next item on the agenda is the fire department candidate interviews executive session, 1 VSA Section 313A3. May I please have a motion to enter into executive session for the candidate interviews under 1 VSA Section 313A3, and to invite the fire department, and then call in the candidate as, as needed? I have a motion, do I have a second? A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion is carried, and we are now in executive session. We are out of executive session. We are out of executive session.
Madam Mayor, I move to retain Jeff Young into the role of administrative firefighter and authorize the mayor to sign the offer of appointments.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion is carried, and I want everybody to know that Jeff Young has a tremendous amount of background responsibility and comes to us now with the high regard of the fire department. Congratulations, and thank you. This goes to Stacy.
Madam Mayor, I'd also like to move to appoint Kevin LaCasse as fire chief.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Is he really willing to do? He wore shorts tonight.
I wore pants.
I mean pants.
So, based upon his formal attire, so, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried, and I want everybody to know that we all know the wonderful qualifications of our interim fire chief, who is now our fire chief, and I thank him very much, and I know he's going to have a brilliant future with our
Oh, yeah. Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Is this the same Kevin LaCasse?
Not anymore. After he's been in here, after all these executive sessions, entirely different person.
Pretty sure he agreed never to wear shorts again.
Oh, yeah, I know, the shorts are kind of bad.
Okay, so that's a good thing. I think the city should be very happy. You have fire department in play. Congratulations to both of you. Okay, the next item on the agenda. Comments by members of the public. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present, and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability of government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings in that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council, to conduct orderly and efficient meetings. I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the published guidelines when participants, when participating in the meeting, and I thank you. When your name is called, please speak into the microphone, state your name, residence, and the under affiliation. Please speak directly through the mayor. Please listen for your time to go off, that the president shall handle for me. Thank you very much.
Pam, City of Newport. Because of some of the correspondence that's been in the newspapers in the last couple of weeks, and, but it seems pretty pointless to me to respond through the newspapers because it also seems, as a member of the public, that what is being printed currently, should have some degree of bias, mildly. I decided that comments I was going to make would be here instead of there, so do with that as anybody wants. One of the letters, because from a former mayor, basically ended with put up or shut up, because it was highly critical of what he thought the council had and hadn't done. There was a lot of stuff in there that was absolute rubbish, and he significantly didn't mention, and emails that we had obtained through Freedom of Information Act that showed he certainly had not been as transparent as he apparently wants everybody else to be. But just to make it clear what this council has put up with and is still putting up with, in the less than 18 months, 17 months, that you, Madam Mayor, have been sitting there, which comes to a total of about 340 working days, because if you subtract holidays, five day weeks from that, that's what it breaks down to. You have alone received over 200 emails from Jennifer Abark, who's the Earling, that counts as harassment. That does not include emails that the rest of you have achieved, have received. There have been 54 Freedom of Information PRA requests, which is a massive amount of work, which you have been expected to slot into your everyday days, and all of you have day jobs as well. And, oh, it's your fault.
That's your time is...
One more minute. And there have been seven, seven open meeting law violations that have been registered. Now, there have been threats of many more, so where those have dissipated to, I don't know. But I want the public to know exactly what it is that you have been putting up with, and put up or shut up, as Mr. Previous Mayor said, is absolutely ridiculous.
Thank you for your comments. I just have two things. One is, you haven't voted on the water and sewer budget yet. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you do intend to, I hope. It's your silence. Okay. The second point, because we fought real hard to have you vote on the water and sewer budget, it's really important to have somebody be supervising it other than a city manager, and I hope you continue to do that. The second thing I had to point out is, I am also in despair that you, you will not be our mayor anymore. You have done an incredible amount of cleanup in the, in the last year and a half, and if you didn't have people hampering you the whole way, I think you would have accomplished a lot more. I know there are things that you have mentioned on occasion, and that don't seem to be resolved yet, and it would be really great, because we sometimes feel out here in the public that we can, we can raise things, and sometimes we get listened to. Well, I think most of the time we get listened to, and then we get ignored, but, but we get listened to. And it would be great if some of the things that you started, that you haven't had the ability to complete because of whatever obstructions that have occurred, if you let us, if you let the public know what's left to still be deep dived on, so that we can, whoever the next mayor is, we can, we can pull their shirt a little and remind them that these things still need to be done. Could you let us know what they are in the next month or so? And, and we'll continue to pull. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, so I would just respond a bit. There, the water and sewer budget discussion will be on February meeting, so that's not just overlooked. I know that I brought it for the first time to vote the last round, and so the council will make that decision. I would presume that they're going to be consistent, but it'll be on the February matter. And I can tell you that whoever becomes the next mayor can anticipate a professional transition from me with identification of what's outstanding issues that are there. So, they're not coming into the situation the way I did, which was like, hi. But I will definitely be working in a professional manner to transition the new mayor, whoever it may be appropriately.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
There's a hand up.
But nobody signed, has to, they would have had to sign up. Okay, next item on the agenda is new business. President Fashan? Councilmember Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Fitch?
Thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is old business. President Fashan?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Fitch?
Thank you.
Treasurer?
No, thanks.
I just have one more thing I'd like to say on your old business, is once again, I want to thank President Fashan for everything he has done. And I, again, it has been an honor to have worked with you. Next item on the agenda is to set the next meeting for the regularly scheduled council meeting for February 3, 2025.
Subtle.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Okay, next item on the agenda is German.
I make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you, everybody.